Hey, welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of August 17th, 2023. Call to order, and the first thing I want to do is welcome our new Planning Commissioner, John Bella, to my right.
Thank you very much.
And then can we have a roll call, please?
Bella.
Present.
Kelly.
Here.
Jansen.
Here.
Pfeffer.
Here.
Newton.
Here.
Chair Swift.
Here. Okay, next, we're going to go on to the approval of the agenda, and Linda, did you want to address changes?
Yes, we're recommending that item number one, the Inclusionary Housing Ordinance be continued to the September 14th Planning Commission meeting, because there were some changes that should have been made to the staff report to accurately reflect the ordinance that didn't didn't occur, and so we want to get it all synced up before you actually hear it.
Okay, with that recommended change, do we have a motion or any discussion of any other items on the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda with the correction of removing item one.
Second.
Shall I call the roll? Bella?
Yeah, Ruth.
Kelly.
Hi.
Jansen.
Hi.
Pfeffer.
Hi.
Newton.
Hi.
Chair Swift.
Hi. Okay, I'm going to go on to reading the meeting protocol. The chair shall maintain order at the meetings in accordance with Robert's Rules of Order, and the commission has the responsibility to be a model of respectful behavior in order to encourage community participation and citizen input at commission meetings. The commission and the audience are expected to refrain from using profane language and/or ridiculing the character or motive of commission members, staff, or members of the public, and to maintain the standards of tolerance and civility. Public comments on non-agenda items: Anyone wishing to address the commission on matters not on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the commission must do so by email, in person, or via Zoom. Presentations will be limited to three minutes or as otherwise established by the commission chair. Conduct: All interested persons are invited to participate in public meetings. In order to give all interested persons an opportunity to be heard and to ensure the presentation of all points of view, members of the audience should limit their presentation to three minutes, provide their comments by email, as mentioned above, state their views and concerns succinctly, and submit any new documents to the planning staff first directly or via email at lneil@townoffairfax.org no later than 2:00 p.m. the day of the meeting to be entered into the record. And just a note on that 2:00 p.m., that's new, previously it was 3:00 o'clock, but we've changed that to 2:00 p.m. Consent calendar. There are no items on the consent calendar, so we're going to move on to the introduction of our new Director of Planning and Building Services, Jeffrey Biswinger.
Yes, we are very happy to welcome Jeffrey. His services are needed, and he's had a long history of doing planning in different parts of California, most recently 10 years in Ronard Park. Yeah, so he comes with a lot of good experience, and it's going to be a pleasure to work with him.
Thank you. Was there anything you wanted to say on your first meeting?
No, I'm just really excited to be here. This is my second day, and and I I have I can give you a little more background. I have a degree in architecture and a master's degree in planning, and so I kind of like I like the I like all the home, the individual home designs I'm seeing around here. I think that's really cool. In fact, I we just we just when we moved to Sebastopol, we purchased kind of an old 1920s house, very small cottage, and we've been adding on to it ever since. So I can definitely relate to a lot of your property owners in Fairfax, because I've gone through the same the same thing in my on the other side of the fence, so to speak. So I'm well aware of that process. And one of the things that I've done a lot of, in addition to kind of staff supplement, I was the planner for Ronard Park, but before that I worked for a consulting firm, and so I was able to do staff planning for a number of different jurisdictions. For the little tiny town of Plymouth, California, up in the Amador foothills, to also for Rancho Cordova, which is a bigger growing town, so I've kind of seen different sizes and characters of towns. And then I also have done a lot of zoning code work. So I was kind of one of the firm zoning code specialists, so I did a lot of zoning code updates. So so I think I'm coming to Fairfax with the right time, because you have to do a lot of those things. So I think I'll I'll be helpful in that respect when you're updating your housing element and then update doing all the code updates. So looking forward to it.
So thank you and welcome.
Yep.
Now we have open time for public expression. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to come up during an open time? And this would be on items not on tonight's agenda. Come on up. And state your name for the record and then push the button on the microphone. Thanks.
I'm Kristy Doman. I live at 545 Oak Manor Drive, and I am impacted by what goes on above me. Sorry. Have to read and and talk, that's. My property is included in the 1991 settlement of the Fairfax Hills and Town of Fairfax, relating to page 25, item 8. Prior to the recordation of the final map of the access road area, phase of the development, appropriate measures satisfactory to the county of Marin and the town engineer shall be taken to improve drainage and slope stability to the area uphill of 535 and 575 Oak Manor Drive. My property lies in between and directly below the initial slide. I believe that the settlement should be enforced as written and intended. I attended and spoke regarding these issues at the Fairfax Planning Commission meeting on June 16th of 2016 at the review of the application for 615 Oak Manor Drive. Linda Neal presented the staff report, including an additional condition added to the resolution, quote, "a maintenance document setting forth the required maintenance schedule for the corrugated metal pipe, affectionately known the CMP, drainage system on the side to be provided by the applicant for the town engineer's approval prior to the issuance of the building permit, and that the maintenance agreement be recorded by the to the county of Marin Recorder's Office. To the best of my knowledge, that has not occurred. I understand that currently there's a submission with the Planning Commission dealing with the replacement of the metal pipe and the corresponding drainage of the roadway to the south of the existing CMP. That has, excuse me, been looked at by my geotech engineer, and assuming that the project is built pursuant to those plans, I have no objections to that replacement. And at the same time, I insist that the maintenance plan regarding and based on the new improvements be recorded with the county Marin Recorder's Office. Regardless of the submission of the 615 application for the fair housing element, there are other portions of the settlement that still have not been enforced and need to be, i.e. the county of Marin and the town engineer shall take shall be taken to improve the drainage and slope stability of the uphill area of 535 to 575. I've been patiently awaiting the implementation of recommendations made and recorded in the minutes of that June 2016 planning meeting, and I've had numerous conversations and emails with the town planning. We're now seven years past the initial approval process for 615, and yet there's no resolve of the complex drainage issues associated with the slide southwest and below the CMP and directly impacting my property as well as my neighbors. I need to sleep soundly and know that the occupants of my home are safe when it's raining, as well as when the water runs on the lot above me and through the existing slide area. How can the Town of Fairfax even consider additional permits associated with 615 and to the longstanding and significant drainage issues, drainage issue issues associated with Julian Ann Crest slash 615 access road be engineered, permitted, and rectified? Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comments in the room? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands on Zoom, Chair.
Thank you. Then I'm going to close the public open time for public expression, and I'm going to go to public hearing items, and that would be number two, 34 Hill Avenue.
So this project was originally reviewed by the Planning Commission at the July 20th, 2023 meeting, and at that time you directed the applicant to do the following: reexamine whether the project can be redesigned to eliminate the need for minimum and combined side yard setback variances; provide revised drawings if possible, and if it is not possible to redesign to comply, provide an explanation of why that can't occur. And then you asked him to erect as required by the code the story poles for the project, and he's done both. He's revised it, so now the project complies with the set all the setback regulations, and it's now construction of a 1,318 square foot, two-story, three-bedroom, two-and-a-half bathrooms, single-family residence with an attached 317 square foot, one-car garage, and two uncovered parking spaces within the west side yard setback. And the square footage of the house has remained the same. They they narrowed the house but lengthened it. And so the changes that were made don't change the drainage plan or the grading amount, the number of trees being removed, or our original analysis of the project and our ability to recommend findings to approve the project. And so we're recommending that you approve application 2318 by adopting resolution number 2023-16, setting forth the findings and the conditions for the project approval.
Planning Commission have any questions for staff?
Just confirming question to the only variance is required for the parking in the site setback, nothing else, correct?
Correct, and one of the commissioners, the chair, pointed out that she would like us in the staff report and the resolutions to make sure it's clear that it's a it's a minimum and a combined side yard setback variance, because the parking is actually in both of those, and we'll make those changes.
Yep.
Any other questions from the Planning Commission for staff? Okay.
I forgot to point out that you did receive a number of emails regarding the color palette for the project. So just want to make sure I bring that to your attention. You all received it by email, and I put copies in front of you on on your podium there or the dais.
Related to the reso, there's a couple corrections in the reso.
If they're ones you sent to me, I'll make them. They were just typos, right?
The date for design review. And then recording of the maintenance.
I wrote them down.
All right.
Yep. Let me just make sure I have that other one in there. Yes, I've got those those, so.
So if no further questions from the commission for staff, would the applicant like to make a comment? Come on up.
Linda, thanks again for the introduction. If you all don't remember, my name is John Simonick. I'm the owner, applicant, and architect for the project at 34 Hill Avenue. I'm going to try to keep this short and focus on the commission's feedback from the last hearing, but before I do, I just just want to briefly mention that, you know, although the project's technically already approved by law under the PSA, I'm here to work with the commission and the community. I'm making a concerted effort to do so. Additionally, I want to mention that although the property line issue is now before the planning commission, I will obviously work with my neighbor prior to construction to try and resolve this conflict. Now, at the last commission hearing, I was given two assignments by the commission: one, erect story poles, and two, remove the east side setback encroachment. Story poles were put up to the best of our ability on August 6th. As you recall, there's some trees and some existing power lines on the site, so we tried our best to get around them and string where we could. In regards to redesigning the project for the minimum setback requirements, for a couple of the new people that weren't here the last time, there's about six square feet that were overhanging the five-foot minimum setback on the east side, which adjoins my property at 15 Ramona Way. And since then, I've redesigned the project to comply with those setbacks. And although it seems like a really small thing to do, it really took a great effort to to kind of ever so slightly move everything on the house and still make it look the same. It took a lot of rework of the interior, some moving of some bathrooms, minimizing some bedrooms, making the garage smaller. So I've done all that. And with that, you know, I really hope the planning commission can appreciate my willingness to accept their feedback and work with them throughout this entire process. And, you know, once again, to my neighbors, and we've got a few more neighbors here tonight. There's probably some listening on Zoom. I just just want to mention again, it it's really difficult to make a project that makes everybody perfectly happy, especially when you're the last person in the subdivision to put a house on your parcel. Before the project began, I went around to all my neighbors and elicited their feedback, and all the feedback that I got, I have really tried to be sensitive to include in this project. And I'm sure that there's probably some new concerns tonight, but I really hope everyone can appreciate at least the rigor and the thoughtfulness I've put in this design to try to make appease every single person. And with that, I'll end and say thank you very much for your time, and I can stay up here if you want, or I can go sit down. Thank you.
Do any of the planning commissioners have questions for the applicant? Commissioner Newton?
Thanks very much. I I just want to comment on the letter we received from a new neighbor about the color palette and see what your reaction to that was.
That's probably from Diane, who's here tonight. She, oh, it's from Lisa. Oh, oh, gotcha. Sorry about that. I haven't seen all of the the comments regarding the color. The color is a new one that has just come up recently. When I originally went out to the neighbors who are directly around the parcel, I don't recall hearing a comment about the color. I really don't. So, you know, if the commission and the community, if that's a thing that's that's going to get this thing over the finish line, I'm happy to entertain a different color as as the commission sees fit, and I'm happy to discuss that, so.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? And just to mention, I have the the color palette, current color palette up here. If no other questions for the applicant, then I'm going to open public comment on this item. You can sit down. Thanks. If anyone would like to speak to this item, come on up.
Ready to go? Good evening. I'm Aaron O'Brien. My wife Kelly and I own the house adjacent to the proposed project at 34 Hill Avenue. Once again, we appreciate the ability to voice some of our concerns related to the project. As we mentioned last month, we have significant concerns about the drainage on the property as well as the survey the town is using. Our surveyor provided significant additional information in a letter following the last meeting that confirms that all the lots on the south side of Hill Avenue would be affected by their survey, but the town surveyor won't review it, leaving only the planning commission to address this. This will clearly be trouble for us going forward, and it is a shame that it is not required for the opposing surveys to be settled prior to the project approval, particularly while maxing out the setbacks and the floor area ratio. It is also our opinion that you have not been given an adequate understanding of the seasonal creek that runs right beneath the proposed construction and that the flow of water on the property will be seriously altered. At this time, we do not feel that these issues have been adequately addressed, but tonight we would like to focus on the things that could at least make the new construction better, both for us and the entire neighborhood. First, on the proposed off-street parking for the property and the requested variance for the location, not just within the five-foot side setback, but actually with a zero-foot side setback on the property against our house. With their new surveyor, their driveway extends directly into our house, leaving no space to move around the outside of our house or to access our basement door, which is further down the house on that same side. If the new survey is overturned in the future, the new driveway would be on our property, and none of the setbacks would be met. There's plenty of space at the front of the property to have a few more feet on our side for a parking side setback of just a few feet. The front lot, the front of the lot is actually 47 feet across compared to our 40 feet across, and the change they just made actually created even more space at the front of the property on the east side. The new plans show that they have 15 feet from the house to the west side property line at the street. Even the side setback for parking, if it were only two to three feet from our disputed property line, could make a huge difference for us and the safety of us being able to go around our house and dealing with the driveway and the cars there. The staff report references that without parking all the way into the side setback, the site would be a hardship or undevelopable, which is simply not accurate, as I think that there are a variety of ways that they would be able to get those spaces in there. The staff report also claims that no one's welfare, safety, or anything injurious to property is at stake, but we also plainly disagree with that, because we feel like this driveway in particular, being so close to our house and our people, our kids, our pets, is just encroaching in our space a lot. Another big concern for us is the huge wall that will now go straight up outside of our house, blocking virtually all of the natural light that we get in our house. The majority of windows in our home are east-facing and will now be blocked. In addition, we understand that the house is intended to be black. This will reflect no natural light and only exacerbates the loss of sunlight caused by the new wall. Perhaps the second story could be set back from the bottom story to allow more sunlight to come into the small space left between our two structures. The narrow alleyway between our houses will not get enough sunlight to grow anything to break up the visual of a two-story black wall outside our kitchen and bedroom windows. Now that the story poles are up, it is evident how close the front of the house is to the street. It rises straight up two stories, very close to the road, and looks quite overwhelming. Again, this is a situation in which the second story could be stepped back a few feet to break up the wall effect at the street. The current design does not fit in with the character of the street, and many neighbors have shared their concerns about how overwhelming the street view the street view is. Lastly, the proposed balcony on the second floor could easily open to the east and face its own adjacent parcel. This would protect the privacy of all parties involved. The current design of the balcony is literally right outside our bedroom window and provides us no privacy at all. We ask that the commission consider these changes, as they would make a huge difference for us and the overall look of the house and feel within this neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish?
Any questions? Hello, my name is Diane Nichols. I'm at 121 Oak Knoll Avenue, which is in San Anselmo, which is a door down from the building project on Hill. And I want to make a couple of comments about the color palette. Several of us have sent in emails expressing our concern. When John was required to get the neighbor agreements from people in Fairfax but not people in San Anselmo, and two of us that are directly affected by by will see the house, and I sent a picture from my back of my house with the story pole, so you can see what I'll be seeing. And he he didn't tell, my understanding from talking to my Fairfax neighbors, he didn't mention the color to them. So Bruce Gowdy, who sent in an email, was not aware that it was going to be painted. The house is black, the trim is black, and the roof is black. I mean, it's pitch black, all black. And then the other, yeah, the other neighbors didn't realize that. And then he did ask our the San Anselmo neighbors to sign a neighbor agreement for the house he's building in San Anselmo. So he's building the 34 Hill Street House, and then right next door is the house on Ramona in San Anselmo, and he's going to be building that up for a second floor and for ADU and adding extending out eight feet. So I did when he asked me to sign the neighbor agreement, I'm the most impacted by that, the Ramona Street House, because it's right right next to mine. In fact, right now, the house is slightly over my property line. So the way my houses work is both my neighbors' houses are either on or very close to the property line, and then his house is on the property line. So I'm, you know, kind of sandwiched in there. So I I asked him, he was planning on painting that a dark, dark, dark gray, and I didn't find that out when he asked me to sign the neighbor agreement. I I had to ask many, many questions to really flesh out a lot of information, and I have been talking to him about that paint color, and he we have not come to an agreement. But I'm just very concerned about the the dark black of the of the Hill Street House. And then you'll you can see in the emails, neighbors have expressed other questions and concerns about the impact on their property. But I just wanted to make it clear that when they signed the neighbor agreements, they didn't realize that it was going to be painted that color. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Colton Christensen. I'm a neighbor of John's and the project. I just want to formally state my total support of the of the project. I mentioned this last time, but as a young family moving into this area, I think we all we all know that we've we have a housing housing crisis, and we want folks to come here and be able to enjoy our beautiful town, and this is a way for us to do that. I think it's really hard to make everybody happy. We've acknowledged that tonight. In my experience with John, he's been incredibly transparent with what is going on and the options that he has and has been willing to work with the neighbors to make sure everybody is as comfortable as they can be. So I hope I hope that we consider moving this forward for a number of reasons, but other than the fact that he's been incredibly thoughtful through this process and couldn't be more couldn't be more supportive of it.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to make a comment? If not, is there anyone on Zoom?
This is on, hi, my name's Kelly O'Brien. I live next door at 32 Hill Avenue to the proposed building, and I don't think the drainage situation has adequately been addressed. We have a seasonal creek that runs down through there. It affects Pat in the back. It affects Barbara, who wasn't able to be here tonight, and it affects our yard quite a bit. The study that John had done only accounted for the rain that falls on his property. Linda pointed out at the last meeting that no one neighbor should be responsible for all the water in a neighborhood, but that doesn't change the fact that all that water is on that property. And so it's in the packet, but it's very deep. There are photographs that we sent in of the creek running through that property in the winter. I would hope that a little more thought and consideration would would go into that drainage for our sake, for Barbara's sake especially, and for possibly Pat's sake, who lives in the cottage behind us next door to Barbara. All of that water from that property comes down onto all of us. So the other issue is I just wanted to express how disappointing the the process has been here. My feeling that you can approve a project when we have differing surveys before that survey has been decided, and you guys get to go forward and say, yeah, go for it, build it. We're going to end up in court arguing that. We have no idea which side is going to win out. In the meantime, he'll pour a foundation, build that driveway. That driveway is now on part of the 300 square feet that the new survey took away from our property. That is property that we've lived on, maintained, paid property taxes on for 25 years, and overnight it's gone. In addition to that, they're saying part of our house now is on their property. We've asked John for an easement to get down to our basement. He has denied that. So I am just bewildered that that's that that's part of the legal process, that you guys are allowed to approve things without solving these issues before it gets done. That feels really disappointing to me, and I just want to go on the record as saying, I don't think it should be that way. I think that's the wrong thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Seeing no more in the audience here, I do have, oh, there is one more in the audience here.
My name is Patricia Silva, and I live on the in front of the property. My name is Patricia Silva, and I live on the, in front of the property we're talking about. I'm right on the corner on Bell Avenue, fifty-nine Bell Avenue. And the, the water comes down Bell and turns a corner. And my house is the lowest house in, on that process before it gets down to the end of Pastore and goes into the, the water system. So every year, I've been there for thirty years now, and many of those years I've had to deal with water coming right up to my porch step. Barbara, my neighbor, has pumps going on both sides of her property to try to get the, the water from going up onto the property. I'm, I'm very concerned about that. I'm older now than I was thirty years ago. And it's, I'm on a limited income, and I feel there's a danger there for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sorry. Anyone on Zoom?
I do have a hand on Zoom. Ivy Christensen, please go ahead.
Hi, um, I am, sorry that I wasn't able to be there in person today. Wasn't able to get a babysitter this night, but I thought it was important. I know in these sorts of circumstances and these meetings that it's typically, people who may not be in favor of this might come out in droves, and those who support it may just sit back and say, you know what? I support it, but I don't need to be there. And I just, I'm so excited for this project. I think like Colton mentioned, being a young family in the neighborhood, we're thrilled that there's going to be other opportunities for the neighborhood to grow and for families to come join this beautiful spot. In terms of John and the process, I know that I can speak for all of our neighbors on Ramona, that we are all thrilled about it, that we think that he's been completely transparent and that willing to talk about the entire process. I know the color has been an issue for some, and some people might see it as black, but it's actually a navy blue. But I know that John has been willing to chat with everybody who's had that at the top of their list and is willing to compromise and bend and be flexible. And I feel like that's something that, you know, speaks volumes. I know I am not an expert on drainage whatsoever, and I know that it's an issue for probably ninety percent of the houses around here. But I, again, I know John to be a, you know, a formal architect, but also somebody who has great integrity and who would never bulldoze and would never do anything to impact his forever future neighborhood and neighbors negatively. So anyhow, those are my two cents. I'm very much excited for this, and I'm very proud of all the work that John has put into this and how flexible he's been with all of us who all have a lot of opinions. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else on Zoom?
I see no more hands online, Chair.
Okay. Then I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
I'll start. I'll start. Yeah, I think the, just to make that clear, the commission is not going to rule on which survey is correct or not. That is not part of what we can do. So I think the way we need to deal with it here is we're assuming that one of the surveys is correct. That doesn't mean it's right. Maybe it's not, in which case the entire application has to restart. But so we as a commission cannot enforce that. Is that correct? That's not the role. So we are assuming that one of them is correct, and it will be determined by the course which one it is. Having said that, I think the, the comment that construction would start before that is resolved is something that I am not aware of, if that is actually possible. Maybe that is a, it seems to me like a very important thing. Maybe I can ask staff to respond to that.
All, all through this process, the neighbors have had the right to take their own legal steps with the, an attorney to try to stop this process, and nothing has occurred. So we had a license survey that was recorded at the county. It was reviewed by the town surveyor, and it was deemed to be accurate and in compliance with the subdivision map act. And the town attorney said, we have to process it. We're bound by the permit streamlining act to process applications in a certain amount of time. We, we tried to get the neighbors to work together, and the applicant took advantage of his right to post the property and demand a hearing, you know, that he's complete and we should process it. And our attorneys directed us to schedule it for this hearing, and you need to act on it based on the information given. So that's, that's where we are. You know, they can, after, after they have another step, if, if the neighbors aren't happy with the decision tonight, they can appeal it to the town council. And then if they're not happy with the town council's decision, they can get an attorney involved, and that will stop the building permit from being issued.
Okay.
Yeah.
So there is a, there is a roadway to do.
Yes.
Yes.
Legal, legal civil process for them to go through because they're having a civil dispute on the property line location.
Right. Again, something that's outside of our jurisdiction. But it's good to know that there is a roadway. I think that is an important thing. I've heard a lot of comments about the color. It's not something I necessarily feel I want to judge about. Black buildings can be nice, but I did hear one thing, and it might be relevant. It does not reflect light, and because this is a congested area, there seems to be an argument in there. I understand from the applicant, he's willing to discuss that, so I think it's probably something we should consider as well. Regarding the drainage, I completely understand the concerns that everybody has because that is a problem in the neighborhoods. But based on the information I have and the engineering is done, if this property is developed, the drainage of that probably will actually get better, which by default therefore makes the entire situation better. But it doesn't solve all the other problems, but it is neither his responsibility to do that. So I'm very sympathetic to the concerns, but it's not up on this owner to solve that other than making his own property better than any other and compliant. And I understand from the engineering done that that is the case. So those are basically all my notes. So having said all that, I'm, I'm happy to see that the applicant made the changes based on our last comment. The building now complies, except for the parking in the side setback, as do many properties out there. I think it was pointed out in the staff reports that most buildings there were developed before there was a requirement, and it, it's very tight. So it happens a lot in that neighborhood, and therefore I'd be leaning to allow that to happen again. So I'm generally in favor. I would add language about the color. I'm going to give it back to the other commission members, see what they think about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, Brett?
Thank you. I actually wanted to add, see if I could ask staff just to clarify something that Commissioner Jensen had said about the determination that the project will make the drainage better. Where, where is that true? Does that play that in our packet somehow?
I mean, it doesn't come out and say it in those words, but you know, we have a drainage study that's based on the hundred-year flood amounts. Right now, there's nothing formal on that property. It sheet flows. The neighbors have, with the old owner, created their own channels to try to direct the water. So there's the drainage study, and they're required by law to not make the situation any worse when they build a new building. But I agree that right now it sheet flows over the property. There's going to be detention basins where the water will be slowed down. It won't be just shooting across the property the way it does now. And so our engineers think it's a good drainage plan. It's a preliminary plan, and it will be, you know, further refined before issuance of the building permit. But I believe the presumption is, the presumption, the presumption is accurate that it will be better than it is now when it's just sheet flowing over the property downstream. Right? There's ways to slow the water down.
Okay.
But I'm not an engineer.
Yeah. So, and neither am I. My understanding of the code that he's complying with, that the applicant is complying with, the intent of that code is to mediate the drainage or mediate the water runoff from new hardscape. So roofs, hardscape, et cetera, the code is intended to slow that water down. The thing is, right now, the property doesn't have any hardscape, and that water would theoretically be allowed to just percolate into the ground. So the documents that I reviewed, it, I'm not confident that that's true, that it will actually be better. And so I, I don't know if there's a condition that we could add that, that says that the town engineer will in fact make sure that we're compliant with that, that it's not being, going to be any worse.
You can add that.
Yeah. Because I, to me, that's the issue with this property. I think the applicant has gone quite a ways to try to be a good neighbor and to talk to everybody, certainly more so than a lot of our applicants do. I actually feel like it's going to be a handsome building. I think that it, the diversity that it will cause in the neighborhood is actually a desirable thing with the aesthetic of the building. Or I think it's a desirable thing for the town. So I, I'm generally in favor of the aesthetics and the choices that have been made. I appreciate the applicant listening to us and pulling back from that setback. I think he's going to be a better neighbor in doing that, not having as much bulk in, on the lot. But I, I do, I am concerned about the water, and I think I said this last time, that part of being a good neighbor is a steward of that water on this site, unfortunately. You're, you know, you're, you're landing on a site that is already identified as a potential hazard in the neighborhood. And I think now you're the steward of the hazard. So I don't know, I don't know how to word or add that condition.
Well, I just, I think you just add the condition that the building permit application be subject to review and approval by the town engineer to ensure that the, that the increased hardscape will not increase the speed or amount of the water leaving the site prior to issuance of the building permit. Does that sound okay?
That sounded perfect.
Can I say it again? I don't know. No. Did you, did someone get that?
Okay, that's it for me. Thank you.
Any other comments from commissioners?
Yeah, thanks. I, I think I said last time that I was in favor of the project, that, you know, part of Fairfax is all of the funky awkwardly sized lots. And as we go to improve our housing stock in the town, we need to make sure that people are actually able to develop on these lots that have bizarre shapes or in neighborhoods that were developed prior to the towns codes. And so, you know, I remain in favor. I just wanted to add a little bit of color onto what Commissioner Jensen was saying on, you know, what we do and don't consider, and I just, I think it's a good thing, and I want to explain a little bit why, because the purpose of the planning commission is to make sure that the towns codes are being complied with, and no one person is getting a benefit that other neighbors aren't getting. And I think that goes the reverse, that each applicant that comes here has a fair shot to develop their property in a way that the existing owners had and have to, you know, redevelop or redesign their properties. And I don't think that it's in anyone's interest for the planning commission to be a stopgap for a legal process where you get to just come to seven people that live in the town and get them to do something that the courts are for, that there's a separate legal process for, that was developed intentionally to manage issues like property line disputes, whether or not someone's property causes water damage to your house. You know, all of those other systems exist and are available, and there's places that we've designed to address them. And I don't think it's fair to have people that you're not electing, you know, the town council points, planning commissioners, get to be an extra chance to make your case to stop a project because of one of those reasons that's more appropriately brought elsewhere.
Thank you. Any other comments before I add mine? Commissioner Newton?
Well, I will just say that I'm in agreement with most of what I heard Commissioner Jansen say about the parking, about the color palette. And I like the drainage that Linda, the solution for the drainage that Linda suggested. Over.
Is that it? Oh, okay. Hey, let me add my thoughts on this. I think one of the permits that comes before us is the design review permit. And when we review an application for a design review permit, the planning commission must make findings in accordance with the code. And the purpose, and some of those are the proposed development shall create a well-composed design harmoniously related to other facilities in the immediate area and to the total setting, as seen from hills and other key advantage points. Only elements of design which have a significant relationship to exterior appearance of structures and facilities shall be considered. These elements may include height, arrangement on the site, texture, material, color, signs, landscape. And on the proposed development shall be of a quality and character appropriate to and serving to protect the value of private and public investments in the immediate area. The size and design of the structure shall be considered for the purpose of determining that the structure is in proportion to its building site and that it has a balance and unity among its external features so as to present a harmonious appearance. So I appreciate the fact that the applicant is able to put up on this site some story polls. I think those, from my perspective, are good for the community surrounding the site to get a sense of it. It's also good for the commissioners. We've heard concerns from some community members about the color, which the applicant is willing to consider changes on. But for me, it's still the design of the house and the height of the house. I just don't see that as a fit from a design review perspective for that lot. I know the lot is not optimal for a building. And I know the applicant, you know, is, is trying to max out on, on the, the zone requirements for height and all. But I just don't feel comfortable. I can't make the findings for the design review permit on this application. Any other comments, thoughts on this? Do I have a motion then? And with that motion, would we incorporate the changes in some of the comments that my fellow commissioners have made? Go for it.
I'd like to make an, a motion to approve application number twenty-three dash eighteen for a conditional use permit.
I'd like to make a motion to approve application number 23-18 for a conditional use permit, design review permit, excavation permit, tree removal permit, and side yard setback variance for the construction of a single-family residence with attached garage at 34 Hill Avenue with the additional condition that the town engineer review the project specifically for site drainage with the condition that the project will not cause additional runoff from the site than occurs currently due to hardscape that's being added.
Any other friendly amendments to that or?
Yes. You know, we heard from Planner Neil that there were some changes references to the minimum and combined side yard setback. The the date for design review, recording of a maintenance agreement. And we also talked about the willingness of the applicant to adjust the color palette. And I wonder if there might be language we could add to give the planning director discretion to approve a lighter color palette on proposed by the applicant to be proposed by the applicant. If, if you would be willing to entertain those changes to your motion. Commissioner Kelly?
I'd, I'd like to just, before I do that, please, I want to just confirm, I'm not sure that I heard the applicant say that he would entertain changing the colors. Sounds, I'm getting a gesture from the audience. Commissioner Newton, you're not in the, you're not in the room to see it, but the applicant is gesturing that he would entertain that. So I would like to add that requirement to the motion. Do I need to restate it? Great. Thank you, Commissioner Newton.
Second, your motion in that case.
So does staff have language in relation to how the color change would work?
Yes, the applicant shall submit a revised color palette that she'll be subject to review and approval by the planning director. And people should understand that our code is a little different than other codes because any decision made by staff can be appealed. So if a neighbor isn't happy with the final color palette, they do have an avenue to bring it back up to the council.
Okay, can we have a roll call?
Okay. Bella? Okay. If you prefer.
Hi.
Okay, Kelly?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
No. So the motion passes and there is a 10-day appeal process for the planning commission's action. And you can get information on that from the planning department. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to 299 Bellinas Road, application 2321.
Yes, so the the, the project proposes the construction of an approximately 129 square foot deck with an access stairway onto the side of an existing approximately 600 square foot detached ADU. The deck would be constructed of wood with metal railings. It would be approximately one foot, seven inches off the ground, and it would provide access to and egress from the ADU bedroom. The project property is developed with the ADU and an approximately 1,300 square foot house. There's also an accessory building that's about 300 square feet, 300 square feet on the property. And there are various walkways, decks, and patios. The ADU was ministerially approved by the planning department in September of 2022. However, the town's ADU ordinance and state ADU law are silent on the provision of amenities like decks for ADUs. So when looking at something like a deck for an ADU, staff has to defer to the regulations of the underlying residential zone, which in this case is the RD 5.5-7 zone. And it requires that the planning commission grant approval of a conditional use permit for any physical improvement to a property that doesn't meet the minimum size requirements. In this, in this case, the property doesn't meet the minimum width based on its slope. So it requires, the deck requires planning commission approval of a conditional use permit. The deck's going to comply with the minimum and combined side yard setbacks and the height and lot coverage regulations of the RD 5.5-7 zone. And findings to grant the conditional use permit can be made, and they're included in their entirety in the resolution 2023-18 approving the project. So staff recommends that the planning commission conduct the public hearing and move and move to approve application 2321 by adopting resolution 202318 that sets forth the findings and conditions of project approval.
Thank you. Do commissioners have questions for staff on this application? Seeing none. With the applicant, is the applicant here?
Chair Swift, I have Cole Stevens, who is a representative from Cottage Industries online.
Okay, you can ask if there's any thing he would like to say regarding this. He doesn't have to, but if anything he wants to say regarding the project.
Cole, if you'd like to talk now is the time, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Commissioner. My name is Cole with Cottage Technologies, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak on behalf of homeowners Julie and John Boldrick at 299. This ADU will be used to allow John's elderly mother to live with them on the property, and the deck will allow easy access to the outside from her bedroom. One other thing I wanted to bring up that wasn't in the report is that John and Julie have agreed to partially remove the existing non-conforming deck near San and Semmo Creek in order to meet the combined setback requirements. And this deck was installed by a previous owner. They are committed to working in good faith with neighbors on any comments they may have about the proposed conditional use permit. So we humbly request that you move to approve this application. And thank you very much for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Do any members of the planning commission have questions for the applicant's representative? Seeing none. Are there any public comments on this application from anyone in the room? Anyone on Zoom?
I see no other hands on Zoom.
Okay, I'm going to close public comments on this application and bring it back for discussion to the planning commission.
I could make a motion.
That works.
I can make a motion to approve. Let me find it. Make a motion to approve resolution number 2023-18 for the conditional use permit at 129 square, for a 129 square foot deck addition to the detached accessory dwelling unit at 299 Bellinas Road.
We have a second?
Second.
Second, Brett? We have a roll call?
Bella?
Hi.
Kelly?
Hi.
Jensen?
Hi.
Pfeffer?
Hi.
Newton?
Hi.
Chair Swift?
Hi. Thank you. There is a, the motion passes and there is a 10-day appeal process. For anyone wishing to appeal this application and information can be gathered from the planning department. Thank you. Our next item is 128 Dominga Avenue, application 2322. Can we have the staff report, please?
Yes. Okay, so this project proposes a voluntary second driveway entrance and a new uncovered parking area. The driveway entrance would be approximately 11 and a half feet wide and would conform to Marin County Uniform Construction Standards. The new parking area would be approximately 11 and a half feet wide as well, and it would be about 21 feet long, and it would provide one 9x19 parking space in compliant with, in compliance with the parking space dimensions required by the town code. The parking area would be a combination of rectangular concrete slabs surrounded by pervious pavers. The new driveway entrance would be approximately 13 feet, nine inches from the existing driveway entrance along the property frontage and a section of the road that is, has not approved for public parking, and it's painted red. Creation of the new driveway will not eliminate any public parking. The project property is developed with a two-story house. There's a garage on the first floor and there's also an ADU that's under construction. The ADU was ministerially approved in November 2022. And it, because it's half a mile from public transit, it did not require any additional parking. There is one covered parking space in the garage and one uncovered non-conforming space in front of the garage. And then because the property is proposing an additional driveway entrance on the same property, on the same front, on the same street as an existing driveway. And it's also going to be greater than 30 feet from an intersecting street. Town Code Chapter 1212 driveway entrances prohibits that. So because of that, the project requires a variance to these requirements and the driveway is going to be approximately 13 feet, nine inches from the existing driveway on the same street, and it's within 30 feet of Court Lane. So the proposed location of the driveway entrance would probably be the least disruptive on this site as it would can concentrate parking for the property in one area. It would also maximize private outdoor open space for the property owner, and it would allow the mature trees to remain on the site. It would also comply with the setback requirements and the parking space dimensions required by the town code. And both the fire department, the Ross Valley Fire Department and Fairfax Police Department reviewed the plans and the fire department confirmed that the, the location of the driveway wouldn't impact fire access or response, and police department didn't have any comments or concerns with the proposed project. It would be a benefit to the community because it would provide an additional off-street parking space in a high-density neighborhood adjacent to downtown that has limited on-street parking. And no parking, on-street parking is going to be lost as a result of the project and it would result in an improvement to the neighborhood parking stock. So staff recommends that the planning commission conduct the public hearing and move to approve application 2322 by adopting resolution 2023-19 that sets forth the findings and conditions of project approval.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for staff? Commissioner Jensen?
The 30 foot, I think that references the little 100-foot-deep cul-de-sac across the street, Court LA. Yeah, it's very, very low traffic. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff? What, yeah, yeah. No other questions for staff? Is the applicant here? And would the applicant like to come on up? And push the button?
Thank you for having me. I'll keep it brief. As staff mentioned, we're just adding a parking space voluntarily. There's an existing red zone, so there's no impact on losing street parking. And there's a net parking improvement adding the space. And we tried to pick the best spot on the lot so we could keep Magnolia Tree that's next to the existing parking space, as well as the fig tree on the other side. And went around and talked to the neighbors and got letters of approval. And that's, that's all.
Any questions for the applicant? Nope. Thank you. Push the button. Is there anyone in the room that would like to make a public comment on this application? Seeing none, Zoom?
There are no hands online, Chair Swift.
Thank you. So I'm going to close public comment and bring it back to the commission.
Just wanted to flag a concern around additional curb cuts on Dominga, which is, I think, one of the few sort of walkable streets that we have in, in downtown. And, you know, yeah, just wanted to kind of flag the concern about additional curb cuts and interrupting the, or compromising the walkability of that, you know, one of our downtown streets that actually is fairly walkable as far as Fairfax is concerned. And just also, you know, raise the question around, you know, is there a real need or demand for that additional space, given that there's already two spaces on the lot? So that's a concern I'm raising. I guess my other thought is that if you've vetted it with your neighbors, then maybe that's okay, but did want to flag that concern around additional curb cuts and potentially compromising the walkability of that really nice stretch of Dominga.
Thank you. Question for staff on that. Putting in that additional parking doesn't impact the sidewalk, does it? There's still?
No, it, it does not.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Any other discussion?
Just summarizing, I think the, you know, the, I think the variance is mostly because it's not a continuous curb. This, the parking is not adjacent to each other. There's no, based on the existing house, there's no way to do that, even apart from the Magnolia Tree. So considering, this seems to be indeed the smartest solution to do it, although unusual. And based on my question, the, the intersection is not so relevant because it's just a cul-de-sac, so that doesn't impact. So I think what's proposed makes total sense within the context. So I would be willing to make a motion.
Let me ask just a question for staff, just for clarification. The staff had mentioned the height of the fence. So can you clarify that the height of the fence in the requirement, the rez zone, not only for where the additional parking space would go in, but the remainder of the fence that is parallel with the street and closer to the street would be lowered?
Yes. So there's a condition that the, there, there's a portion of the fence that is, is, is six feet, and it's right on the property boundary. And it needs to either be moved, if it wants, if they want it to remain six feet, they either have to remove it back to the, the setback, the front setback line of six feet, or they have to lower the height to four feet if they want to keep it on the property boundary. So they, they, the property owner indicated that they, they were, they would be willing to lower the fence height. they, they were, they would be willing to lower the fence height. So there's a condition in the resolution that, that requires that it conform to the, the height for fences.
Okay, thank you. No other comments? You want to go with that motion?
I'll make a motion on Resolution 2023-19 for Application Number 23-22, granting a variance for a second driveway entrance at 128 Dominga Avenue.
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Pfeffer, can we have a vote, please?
Bella?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Motion carries. There is a 10-day appeal process, and individuals can get information on that process from Planning Department. Thank you. Thank you. Our next application is Seven Valley Road.
Okay, so this project encompasses the demolition of an existing 403-square-foot carport and 25-square-foot storage closet on the north side of the residence to construct a 438-square-foot carport and a 104-square-foot storage room underneath the carport cover. Construction of an approximately 127-square-foot trellis over the residence's front access walkway and legalization of the conversion of a rear 120, 20, 122-square-foot accessory structure for use as office space. The project requires the approval of a conditional use permit and a combined front and rear setback variance. With regards to the conditional use permit, the office is only going to be used by the residents between the hours of 7:00 AM and 7:00 PM, and therefore it will not create any light or noise disturbance for the neighboring properties. The use of the accessory structure by an office, as an office by only the residents, will not increase traffic to the site or increase the use of available public parking spaces within the immediate neighborhood. So we're able to recommend findings for the condition, for approval of the conditional use permit. And the project also requires a variance of the combined front and rear setback, because the carport will extend within six feet of the front property line, and the existing shed that's being converted, been converted to an office only maintains like a two-and-a-half-foot setback from the rear property line, so the combined front and rear setbacks actually only going to be about 10 feet due to the existence of the, uh, you know, the location of the house on the site and the existence of this accessory structure. But, but there are other properties in the neighborhood. In the 1970s, the town changed all its setback regulations and adopted these combined setbacks, and most of the development predates that ordinance, and so you often see properties that don't meet either minimum or combined setbacks, and this won't be out of char, character with the development in the neighborhood that you see. So we're recommending that you approve Application 23-23 by adopting Resolution 2023-21, setting forth the findings and the conditions of the project approval.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Uh, yes, I have one. So in the setback table, site setbacks, the existing listed as six and eight foot, and then for the proposed, it says no change. I believe that to be incorrect, I think the existing carport deck is just over seven foot away from the property line, and the proposed only three feet, violating the minimum.
Are you looking at the eve line?
Yeah, looking at, so sheet, let me take a look, sheet. A10 shows the existing, it's clouded. You'll see the fence line, seventh, uh, is that the right one?
If you look at sheet A10, the site plan, right?
Yeah, so, no, the, the one that shows the new deck is A1.1, and the new carport deck is three feet away from the property line.
Oh, I see what you're saying. So, so you're correct. The table should be corrected, but it doesn't change the, I mean, the, the carport meets the minimum and the combined.
Well, it's less than five.
So when I look at A1.1, setback is called out. The dotted line is the actual framing for the carport, and it's, and it says five feet from the property line, and it's the eve that extends over that's shown with the, uh, like, hatched roofing markings. Unless I'm... So the three feet is calling out the edge of the eve?
Yes.
So eves are allowed to encroach two feet, two feet into an acquired setback?
I'm not seeing where the columns are, though.
They're really small. If you, if you look where, see where, see where five foot is called out? Look, look, look south of.
They're so small, we can't see them.
Yeah, look south of the three-foot setback measurement called out, and you're going to see the five feet and the slash mark showing where the column is goes through the column, the support columns.
No, that does, that, that dash line is the five-foot setback line. It's present in both drawings. But so I don't know where they are. That's maybe.
Oh, well, wait, I think, I think I understand what you're saying now. So go to page, the columns are shown clearly on page 8.0.
Sorry, A2.0?
Yeah.
Uh, that's existing?
Oh, that's existing, sorry.
And 2.1, the new, doesn't show them.
Yeah, so.
Unless there's only one, but.
Uh, maybe the applicant can, can address that, but I mean, these are preliminary plans, and the building plans will have to comply with the building code, so I mean, it's, it's going to be, but if you're concerned that the support post might impact the neighbors somehow, that's a valid concern. But it's an open carport. It's not going to be enclosed on any sides.
True. Yeah, well, maybe the applicants can answer where the columns go. Thank you.
Any other questions for staff?
I might have missed it. Uh, is there a record of when the accessory structure, the 122-square-foot accessory structure was constructed?
No, there's not. And the property was built at a time when set, when accessory structures could actually be built up to property lines, right? And so there's no, the record's not clear. It's like a lot of our older homes where there's structures that don't show up in the record anyhow. It first shows up in a resale. I think I pointed out what year it first showed up in a resale, but that doesn't mean that it wasn't already there. This is kind of an unusual area of town because that whole frustic neighborhood, it's all like, so all these lots on Valley were subdivided in an unrecorded subdivision, okay? And the property was all under the ownership of one family, and so lots were subdivided out on Cascade with recorded subdivisions, but this frustic thing never got recorded. I mean, there could have been, you know, there were like sheep herders out there, you know, sheep farms and stuff. So there's no way for staff to, to prove that the structure wasn't built at a time when it was legal to just build it. We don't have any evidence, and so in a situation like that, we assume it's been there through two owners, and it's an existing legal non-conforming building.
Could, could you just point to where that?
The date?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just missed it. Linda, could you just point that out to me, please?
I pointed it out. Hang on, that should be in the background somewhere. I might have taken it out.
You mentioned it in the 2013.
Yeah, there's no record of when the accessory structure was built, but the first reference shows up in a 2013 resale. You know, so the, these kinds of structures are all over Fairfax, and sometimes we just have to rely on like neighbors that have lived in the neighborhood for a long time to show up and say, hey, I saw them building it without a, you know. It's a, the records aren't clear in Fairfax. It's something we just live with and try to deal with one day at a time.
Any other questions? For staff? Seeing none. Is the applicant here?
I have the applicant Brooks McDonald online. Brooks, go ahead.
Great, thank you. Uh, thank you so much for your time. Um, let me just first address the Commissioner's question about the location of the columns. On A2.1, there's a dimension of 18 foot six and a half, that dimensions between the two columns. The column at the upper part of the drawing is outside of the five-foot setback, and the other one is actually 12 feet from the front property line, so the structure is, is intended to be compliant, and then, as Linda mentioned, the eves will encroach as is allowed into the setbacks. I wanted to point out just three quick items. One is, if you're familiar with Valley Road, it's really, really tight. It's really a single-lane road, and there's only space for one car to pass another at the time, and so we're actually, we're adding a second parking space and bringing this property into more compliance, but also more importantly, removing a car from the street, which I think will make it a lot safer. The second is that the lot coverage, where, where this project is, is resulting in a reduction in lot coverage, but it's, it's actually, I would consider it more than what we've listed on the cover sheet of our, of our plan set, in that currently, if you look at photos, the, the carport, uh, beneath the carport, it's a slab. And then adjacent to the walkway is another slab next to the redwood tree. All of those are being taken out and replaced with permeable materials. Part of the lot that is considered impermeable in our calculation is actually the public, sort of, well, it's, it's the road, even though it's, it's on the lot, but it's, it's, it's acts as the public right of way, so that's asphalt that we can't change. But as we know, like, the, the sheet drain of rainwater doesn't care about a roof, and so the impermeable surface is beneath the roof of the carport, I think should be just sort of recognized as an improvement in the overall drainage and a major reduction in the pervious, in the, a reduction in the impervious surfaces, I should say. The last thing was that this outbuilding at the back, unfortunately for my clients, when they purchased the house, it was relayed to them by the previous sellers that the structure had been previously permitted, and that turned out to not be true and not be on file, and so that came up as a surprising issue for us when we started to work on the, the carport, and so it's our intention to, you know, to keep this as an office structure, but also to legalize it. And I also want to point out that directly behind the rear property line that this, uh, this structure is close to is a 20-foot paper road, and so it's a further separation from any adjacent neighbors, and I think will just suggests even less of an impact to the neighborhood. And lastly, I would just like to mention that since we're going to rebuild this carport structure with current building codes, with all compliance with the, with WUI requirements, it will be more resistant to fire danger, and, and I think it'll be an improvement aesthetically as well. And that's, that's my comment.
Thank you. Does anyone have questions for the applicants? I have a question relating to the office. It seems that office has been as an office for, since 2015. My question is, are there any exterior lights on that structure?
There, there are some exterior lights. We've actually, um, we've shown them on the plan set, and they're, i- if they're not already, I believe that we will be required to replace them with downward-directed and shielded lights that are on a photo sensor.
And that's, um, what I was getting to was, you know, if there were exterior lights, that they be dark sky compliant, so we can address that then too in, in a reso. All right, thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
And if there's no other questions for the applicant, is there any public comment that anyone would like to make on this application? Anyone in the room? Seeing none, anyone on Zoom?
I have no hands online.
All right, thanks. Then I will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for discussion. Um, I'll make a quick question on the reso. So the reso, on page two, the first whereas states that the project is approved per the plans as a, as a home office for use by the residents. But I guess my question for staff is the, it's not legalization of that that is the only thing with this. There are other parts to this application, correct? So so just making a comment that.
Oh, it almost seems like there's something missing from that sentence, because what it should really say, it should just say it's approved as, per the plans prepared by Brooks McDonald, received on, by the town on August 1st, 2023.
Right, and delete the reference.
The whole project.
Delete the reference to what the project claims.
It's the covered trellis and all that.
Yeah, all right. Thank you. Any other discussions or anyone want to make resolution?
I'll move to approve the, uh, Resolution Number 2023-20 of the Fairfax Planning Commission, approving Application Number 23-23 for a conditional use permit and combined front and rear setback variance for the reconstruction and expansion, construction slash expansion of an existing carport and construction of a front trellis and legalization of the conversion of an accessory structure into an office at Seven Valley Road with the, uh, deletion referenced by Chair Swift in the first whereas clause on the second page regarding the nature of the application. And did you want to add anything on the, on the lighting?
Yeah, I think, I think you wanted to add the standard dark sky compliant lighting condition, which we can add as, um,
Correct.
like, condition number eight, that any new exterior lighting comply, you know, the standard condition has to be dark sky compliant and no uplighting. I can't recite it from memory, but it's, um, yeah.
Our standard dark sky compliant language to be added. Yeah, that's my motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we have a vote?
Okay, Bella?
Aye.
Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Newton?
Aye.
Chair Swift?
Aye. Motion passes. There is a 10-day appeal process, and information on the requirements for that can be obtained from the Planning Department. Thank you.
Chair Swift, if I may, before we get to the next item, I'm going to need to recuse myself because of the proximity of this property to my residents, and, uh, I'm going to ask if I can just call it a night. Uh, I think the only remaining items after this one are the, uh, item regarding the the minutes issue, based on the, um, Council's strategy for minute taking and the actual approved, the minutes from the last couple of meetings. So if you don't mind, as I recuse, I might just say, goodnight.
Thank you. And with that, we note that Commissioner Newton is leaving at 8:30 Pacific Time. Thank you. So can we have the staff report on 771 Center Boulevard?
Yes. The, this project encompasses the remodel and conversion of approximately 2,000 Yes. This project encompasses the remodel and conversion of approximately 2,000 square feet of an existing commercial space in the Fairland Selma Shopping Center. It's being remodeled into a health and healing treatment and wellness business that will provide, and the applicants will have to explain exactly what these treatments are if you have questions about it, because it's been a learning experience for me, but I don't pretend to understand what it all entails. A prison light pad room providing full-body light therapy device, a cryo room. I wanted to clarify, I sent out a correction to you guys. Somehow, I, from what I read on the internet, I got, I was under the impression that these chambers had to use liquid nitrogen, and that is not correct. So it's just an electric system, and if you want more information, the applicant will have to explain it to you. And there's going to be a normatec room that has an air pressure massager to relieve minor muscle aches and pains, and just a regular massage room. So the proposed spa is a personal service wellness use similar to a gym or a spa offering beauty or other health and personal well-being services such as saunas and hot tubs. I mean, our code is a bit old-fashioned. It has a laundry list of permitted uses in our different commercial zones, and a lot of our new uses that we have are not even, you know, they were just a dream in someone's head at the time when the ordinance was written. And so the code does include language that allows the Planning Commission to grant conditional use permits for uses that are not specifically listed. And so that's, I brought this before you for a conditional use permit, because this type of use is not specifically listed. We also, you know, we always compare the traffic generated by the previous use to the traffic generated by the new use for projects requiring conditional use permits. And I was able to obtain information from a regular attendee of the, what was it called? Of the Buddhist center that operated from this space prior to this business trying to go in. And I do not believe it's subject to the traffic impact permit process. It would have to increase the traffic trips to the site, 100, 100 average daily traffic trips a day, more than the previous business. So I did not make the determination that a traffic permit, permit was required. I'm able to make the conditional use findings. The proposed business is not expected to generate the need for additional parking or cause a significant amount of traffic to visit the Fairland Selma Plaza more than the previous site. It's not contrary to the objective goals or standards set forth in the Fairfax General Plan. Shall not create a public nuisance. The only specific conditions that I received were from the Marin County Environmental Health Services Department. They indicated that, yes, this, this type of use will require a permit from them, and the permit has to be obtained prior to issuance of the building permit. So they'll be looking at all the devices and, you know, signing off on them before the building permit is issued. And then Marin Municipal Water District indicated that the property's current annual water entitlement may be insufficient for the new use. So it might require a purchase or transfer of additional water entitlement. So they're going to need to complete a high-pressure water service application and submit it to MMWD prior to issuance of the building permit. And so we're recommending you approve the project based on the findings and subject to the conditions contained in attached resolution number 2023-21.
Thank you. Do, does anyone on the Planning Commission have questions for staff on this application? Seeing none is the applicant here. Would you like to speak to this? Push the button and state your name.
Joseph Drummer. So it's called longevity hyper wellness. It's all about offering treatments, nothing that oversteps a medical doctor, essentially raising and lowering the body temperature via infrared saunas and cold plunge baths. It's really all about just offering, you know, the benefits of, you know, these are all methods that have been, that have had extensive research done on them across US, the most recent research coming from Scandinavia, proving that these are methods and that genuinely increase the quality and length of your life. So that's what we aim to offer. Red light therapy, we're exposed to infrared red light at all times of the day when we're out in the sun. It can only help you. The prison red light pod is designed to essentially penetrate every cell in your body. It's regenerative for, for your cells, promotes cell turnover, it's anti-aging, promotes weight loss. It was actually designed to assist astronauts coming back to Earth after spending, you know, months or years out in outer space, helping their bodies, you know, recover, and their cells regenerate and get used to gravity and whatnot. We're adding two showers. That's probably a little bit of, some malls, some showers. The, there's two rooms that are for the, the use of the infrared sauna and the cold plunge bath in tandem with a shower. Clients can come in. It's all private, personal use. They have the room to themselves. They can come and go. There's a lounge they can come and stay as long as they, as they like, you know, it's built lounge-style, membership-style. And, yeah, you know, I'm just here to try and spread the, the state-of-the-art benefits that a simple hot and cold have to offer, so.
Thank you. Anyone have questions for the applicant? Nope, thank you. You can-
Sorry, I had a-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
So, you know, in our packet, we have Linda Neal's questions to you about traffic and the amount of people and average daily use, and I saw your response on, you know, if somebody were to use all the equipment. But I didn't see an estimate come from you and just want to double-check if you have an expected amount of customers that you'll have on any given day, or-
I would imagine the weekends would, would fill up the schedule more during the week. And just given this from experience, you know, I've been in health and wellness, I've been a personal trainer, you know, my, you know, in and out of the last 12 years, you know, I really devote a lot of my life to this. I've worked in and out of gyms. During the week, people come before and after work. You know, I would imagine about thirty to fifty, thirty to forty percent occupancy tops on those days, you know, if we're really pumping a lot of appointments out. The weekend, I would imagine, you know, we could maybe, if we're doing really well, sixty to seventy percent of those available appointments. If a hundred percent great, but I do think that that would still add up to, you know, even if we're doing, I think we're projecting like, you know, fifty or sixty percent average, and that would, you know, it wouldn't even come close to like, you know, maybe eighty or ninety appointments tops, I think. And they would spend, if they were to use all the treatments, crowd therapy is a three-minute treatment. You wouldn't really do that on the same day as a sauna or as a, you know, sauna and a plunge, because you're getting the cold exposure. If you were to spend forty-five minutes in the plunge rooms, fifteen minutes in the red light room, and thirty minutes in the normatec compression sleeve room, and then hung out in the lounge for thirty minutes, you'd probably be there for about two hours if you were really there to spend time and use everything, which I wouldn't expect, you know, all of our clients to do, but I would hope, you know, that people would do that.
Great, thanks. And then I just had one sort of related question. If you do have all seven treatment rooms going at one time, are they, these treatments you mentioned, I think in the plans, that there would be two employees on site generally? Do the treatment, you know, if you're more fully booked, do you need more staff to monitor and deal with each of the rooms?
No, because each room is, because it's, because it's all private rooms, all the machine, the equipment is self-operative. So the only, the only room that would need assistance would be the crowd therapy room, and that would be one client at a time. So everybody would be getting individual attention. I would most likely have somebody operating that room, somebody at the front desk checking in, and then me, the face of the business, you know, leading people, to, leading people to rooms, consulting, selling sessions, and, you know, so it's going to be me floating around, and somebody working the crowd machine, and then somebody making calls at the, at the front desk.
Any other questions for the applicant? So when you say eighty to ninety appointments, potentially a day?
No, 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 a week, a week.
A week, all right.
That was, that was the answer just to the, the parking, or-
Okay.
The parking, yeah, sorry, I didn't mean to-
Anticipate how many appointments per day?
Maybe ten.
Okay, and those would be ten individuals. It wouldn't be like one individual with several appointments for the different rooms, right?
Yeah, if they chose to do, if they chose for multiple treatments, yeah.
Okay.
But, you know, there, there's two, two rooms of sauna and plunge. They offer seven available appointments, you know, across the hours of the day. So that's fourteen, but, you know, in the hours that people would actually use them during the week, it would be most likely be two in the morning each room, two in the afternoon each room, and that would be eight a day. And then, you know, the, since those would be the most used appointments, and those eight a day would most likely, you know, may or may not use one of the additional services like red light or normatec.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Nope, thanks. You can have a seat.
Thank you guys so much.
Do we have anyone in the room that would like to make comments on this application?
I am, I'm Rich Hall. I'm the managing partner for Fairfax Plaza, and I'd just like to call out that the previous use had approval for a hundred and seven patrons simultaneously. So the use in terms of traffic is significantly reduced, and his use is particularly complimentary to our other tenants in the building. And so we're very happy to have him join us, because it's a good complement to the two gyms and the Pilates studio and the other uses that we have, in addition to all the Fairfax bikers, which we anticipate will be a significant part of this clientele. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Is there anyone on Zoom?
I see no hands on Zoom, but if the Commission wants me to try any of the treatments for feedback, I'd be happy to.
I'll start. I think it's pretty straightforward. We are sitting here because this particular use was not envisioned somewhere in the seventies when they made the code, and I cannot find anything wrong with it. So I'd be willing to make a motion. I'll make a motion on resolution 2023-21 here for the Planning Commission to approve conditional use permit for long-lived and alternative physical health and healing treatment and wellness business at 771 Center Boulevard, Fairland Selma Commercial Center.
We have a second?
Second.
Can we have a vote?
Yes, Bella? Kelly?
Aye.
Jansen?
Aye.
Pfeffer?
Aye.
Newton?
Recused.
Oh, that's right, I forgot. Thank you. Chair Swift?
Aye.
Motion carries. There is a ten-day appeal process, and information on that process can be obtained from the Planning Department. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to go on to the discussion items.
Oh, yeah. I got my order out of order. Have I forgotten something I was supposed to say during the discussion? Cindy, you're looking at me like I, was I supposed to cover something?
Under discussion items is considerations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just remembered. Yeah, we just wanted to touch base again about the second public hearing that we're scheduling. I heard back from everybody, it sounds like everybody's available except PJ might not make one of those meetings. And Mimi, her schedule's a little bit up in the air, but I think we're going to have the three-quarter, the three-quarters of you that we're going to need in order to take action on any ordinances that come forward. So I just want to look at you all and say, you are available for that second meeting, which is going to be, most of you are available, the second meeting, it's the second, it's going to be the second Thursday of each month for September, November, and, no, I'm sorry, yeah, September, October, and November. That's all that's envisioned now. That doesn't mean that we won't have to extend that, depending upon how all these ordinance changes that we have to do and how, how it all goes. We might need to extend that beyond November.
Okay, so we're scheduling it?
Yes. Okay, good.
Okay, also under discussion items was continued consideration of proposed changes to the minute-taking.
Okay, so we feel pretty strongly about this, because there actually was a resolution passed by the Council quite a while ago that said that the Commission was supposed to move to these, this type of summary action minutes. We also have a minutes clerk that is looking to dial back the amount of time it takes her to do minutes. And, and we've heard from numerous attorneys over the years that less is better when it comes to minutes. You know, if you get, do end up in the court on something. Our beloved Zoom coordinator also is in the process. She believes that there is a feature of Zoom where you can download, do you want, can you explain it? You understand a little bit better than I do.
Sure, I, I run a transcript at the same time, and at the end of the session, I can simply save the transcript to ensure. The only difference you'll see is that it says CMCN instead of everybody's individual names, because we have one mic, you know, in the transcript. But if you're like calling in, it will say your name, so it'll say Mimi's name, and it'll say CMCN for anybody who's at the table. But other than that, it really does a pretty good job of, it's a, like a voice-to-text kind of software, and-
And then staff will save that into our, you know, permanent records. So there will be a written, electronic, written record of the meetings, probably more than people want to read, but it'll be there. And then we have the recording as well, video, the video recording. So we're recommending that you accept the fact that the minutes clerk is going to be doing what the resolution of the Town Council directed was supposed to be happening this whole time. You know, we can always revisit it if it turns out, you know, you're not happy with it, but that's what we're recommending right now for you to do.
And so, and my concern with minutes, and I will be honest and say, I haven't looked at the minutes in the packet. So I'll be abstaining on those, but as long as they capture relevant parts of the meeting, things that go into maybe how the Commission makes decisions. Because I, because-
I mean, ultimately, you have final say-
Right, right.
So I mean, if you feel that something-
Right.
Be added, you would have the ability to add it back in, and it's just-
Right, and I figured that. But, you know, from the standpoint of having a transcription or a video, I think the minutes, written minutes serve a purpose. Not everybody has those capabilities, so as long as the minutes do capture the essence of the discussions, and as you said, we can always make changes to the minutes when they, they come before us to be approved. I'm good.
Yeah, I think it, it says somewhere in there, and I think that's the nicest way I heard it described. So instead of recording what was said, you're recording what the actions are. That's what I do in my business. We never record what everybody says, so I think that's a very efficient way to do it. But yet, you might have to go back sometimes, and of course, there is an actual recording, but I really like the transcript component, because if I do searches on what was said, I use automated search programs. You're not going to read all the minutes, and the transcript can do that. If you want to find any particular topic over the last twenty-seven years, and you have transcripts, you'll have it in five minutes. So I think the combination of those things is technology that we're all using. So I think the combination of those things is technology that we're all using. So I'd be completely in favor, and, and last but least, we are a very small town. So resources are by necessity very limited, so we should move to, to that system. I, and I understand all the concerns, but it, it's common practice. I'm doing it already in all other places, so I think we should try it.
And I agree, I, you know, and, and just from the, from the understanding that you have the technology and what you do in your business doesn't necessarily reflect the capability of the community as a whole. But again, as long as we can make changes to the minutes when we review them, I'm good.
Yeah, and we'll have the ability, if someone can't get to a computer, we can print out a copy of the transcript if they need it, the item that they're interested in, so.
So with that.
Can I just?
Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, I just wanted to add that as someone who does dive through lots of records for not just Fairfax or Marin, doing to the way we're switching is actually when you're with a body that has recordings, a lot easier and faster because there's less text to sort through to make sure that you're watching the right section and finding the right meeting to actually get to the recordings quicker. The, the one thing I would suggest, given, you know, everybody's comments on why this is helpful and all the other avenues people have to understand the record of what happened in the meeting, is if we can have a condition that just says this is automatically at least reviewed or brought to the commission for consideration if at any time there are no audio, text recordings, video of, of the meeting in full. So for example, YouTube service stops hosting all of the town's videos. We don't, nobody puts in another service in place and nobody else thinks about what happened to our records that we were keeping.
Okay, with that, should we go on to the review of the two minutes? Right, so that is May 18th and July 20th. Does anyone have any corrections on either of those? We'll start with May 18th, maybe.
May I go back one second?
Sure.
We don't have to take action on the meeting minutes topic?
I mean, if you really wanna make it clear, you can, do you think, do you think they need to take action on that, or they just all agreed to do the minutes the other way? I mean, do we already have a resolution from the council saying that's how they're supposed to do it?
Yeah, what, what I heard was you were okay with us experimenting with it and trying it out, so.
Yeah, no, good. I'm not looking for, I just, just a question. I'm fine.
You're good at it. So for the May 18th minutes, does anyone have any corrections? How about the July 20th minutes?
I had a correction. I want to include Augie's name, the representative of Fairfax Lumber. It's Venet, Venet, I don't know how to say it, V E N E Z I A. I want to put his last name in there on page three. That was my only change.
And, and did we correct his, those minutes from? Okay, so.
Can you, can you remind me tomorrow what I'm supposed to, those really old minutes?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And, and that's just related to the first meeting we had on Fairfax Lumber. When that application came before us, the minutes showed that the representative for Fairfax Lumber was Augie, and it wasn't, it was their
Charlie.
Charlie, their manager. So that was one of the things we wanted to correct, and I think there was, I think the other item in those minutes were corrected. So it's only that, that one correction we need to make, which I think would be important for that.
Thank you for reminding me.
So if there are no other corrections to either of those, can we have a motion?
Motion to approve meeting minutes from, let's see, that was May 18th, I believe, and July, July 20th with one correction on page three regarding the last name of Augie.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Have a vote?
Call the roll. Bella?
I.
Kelly?
I.
Jansen?
I.
Pfeffer?
I.
Chair Swift?
Have any commissioner comments or requests?
One, one, sorry. I don't know if it, we're gonna hear about it under Planning Director's Report, but reminded in the end of the July 20th minutes that Commissioner or Chair Swift had asked that we get an update on the housing element at the next meeting. Maybe that's something that's just gonna happen at the September 14 meeting.
I actually kind of felt like the, I kind of, maybe I mis, mis, misread the whole thing, but I thought that schedule that they sent, you know, that we sent to you for the second meetings kind of laid out what the next steps were, but if you wanted more information, we can definitely get something more to you at the next meeting. Did you?
No, that, no, that's fine. I just, in case anybody wanted to hear the meeting, just that, that, you know, we're having extra meetings of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, it had the topics that we're gonna, you know, that we're trying to accomplish in those special meetings, but if you need anything else, you can, and you can email us or the new Planning Director, me, at any time if you have specific questions for what's happening with that. We can relay it to the consultant and get you an answer. So if you want a little more detail, we can, I asked for him to give me an update, and that's what I got. So that's what I gave you.
Thank you. Any other commissioner comments or requests? With that, there is a Planning Director's Report here, but we'll let him off the hook since this is his first meeting.
And only second.
And second day. But we only care about what you do here with us. And so with that, do I have a motion for an adjournment?
Motion for adjournment.
Second.
We have a roll call.
Bella?
I.
Kelly?
I.
Jansen?
I.
Pfeffer?
I.
Chair Swift?
I. And with that, that concludes our meeting. Thank you.